Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. If you're here this evening in the audience and you wish to make a comment, there will be time at the end of the board meeting. If you're not in person and you're watching this from home, either live or after the fact, if you have any comments, questions, concerns, please call the central office at seven five one nine three nine nine. Mrs. Devan will direct your question to board members or to me to get the answer for you. And if it's a concern, we'll make sure that we send that to the board also. At this time, I'll turn the board meeting over to President Carter.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Please stand, join me closely. Plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Item one B, approved meeting minutes stated August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two A, resolved at the Wilson Central School District Board of Education, approve the following items, B through G in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three A, resolved at the Wilson Central School District Board of Education, appoint Carter Billy to serve as ex officio student board member effective September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four and end in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Well, no board member. The faithful service is going to be, oh, this is going to be issued by Superintendent Carter.
Go ahead. Yeah, just, our district.
Parker, do you will recite the oath of faithful performance of service?
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wilson Central School District Ex Officio Student Board Member according to my, to the best of my ability.
First thing he's looking down on, when he has multiple things on it, we gotta go. It's official.
Item five A, approved personal consent agenda items B through J per September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, personnel, six A, accept the resignation of Jessica Peor, food services helper, monitor effective August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, accept the resignation of Pope Wright, teacher A, guidance office effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, accept the resignation of Sherry Van Dermer, food service helper, monitor effective September twenty-third, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item seven A, approve agreement between Wilson Central School District and Todd Harmon, Director of Facilities Three, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, student teacher Maxwell Schumaker from Buffalo State University will be student teaching in middle school with James Alderman, social studies teacher, retroactive from August twenty-sixth through October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. His fingerprints have been cleared by the New York State Department, Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Student teacher Adriana Ferrerix from Buffalo State University will be student teaching in the high school with Daniel Luzinski, special education teacher from October twenty-one through December thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Fingerprints have been cleared with the New York State Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, Charles Stidolka, a student enrolled at Canisius University to complete two hundred practicum hours in the high school with Bill Atlas, phys ed teacher, between September five, two thousand and twenty-four and December thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four, as scheduled by Mr., by Paul Galovitch, high school principal. Approval is pending New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, William Conroy and Mateo May, students enrolled at Canisius University to complete thirty observational hours in the middle high school with Katie McGowan, physical education teacher, between September nine, two thousand and twenty-four and December six, two thousand and twenty-four, as scheduled by Paul Galovitch, high school principal. Approval is pending New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing under policies. Item nine, approved CPSE, CSC five oh four meeting minutes and IEP recommendations dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item ten, approved private parochial transportation request per the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda items B through D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eleven, conference request, approved conference request per the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda items B through H. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item twelve, conference report, Ms., Superintendent Carter.
Thank you, President Carter. I have a conference report for Brooke Smith. On August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, she attended the NETT Summer Conference at Niagara University. The presentation that she intended included enhancing classroom community, digitized informal assessments, and Magic School AI. Specifically, she attended workshops that focused on finding ways for teachers to use AI to enhance unit and preparation for teachers' instruction, using AI as a positive research tool, using the eighty-twenty world, and making, making teachers' life easier, saving time and finding ways to engage students using digital means. Her key takeaways from the conference work, although, although AI can be problematic at times, there are many benefits as well. Second key takeaway, there are many platforms such as Padlet, Canva, Google Classroom, and Magic School that have interactive and engaging ways to teach students in their classroom. And technology cannot replace all hands-on activity for learning, but there's a good balance to be made between them. And finally, they'll meet, meet the needs of the students through ever-changing accessibility of information through technology and online platforms. And that's, that conference report. I believe Mr. Benton, you have two?
Yes. What, the long version or the short version? Let's draw.
Six words.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. All right, the first conference I went to, or speaking about was the Leadership Retreat Conference Report through the area of Bosse's, and it was held at Holliday Valley. So thank you for allowing me to attend that. It was a great conference. It was titled Growing as a Leader from the Inside Out. And the introduction first was Better Leaders Seminar with Amy Musanti, and she's a national instructional coach. And that was a full day of her giving us insights into becoming better leaders. And it emphasized the importance of self-awareness and emotional intelligence in leadership. And she guided us through interactive exercises, role-playing, encouraging reflection on our leadership styles and how these impact our schools and teams. Day two was a phenomenal day. We had Duncan Kirkwood, he is a global resilience speaker, author, and educator dedicated to inspiring individuals and communities worldwide, and he's local too, he's very dear out of Buffalo. And I spoke with Tim and Amy, see if we can get him in the air for some professional development, but super, super expensive, but telling you, he was just phenomenal. His message is just, it's invigorate, you know, he gets you really to, to get out of your shell, get off your, your, out of your chair, move around, and just to really reflect on your leadership styles and how you can implement that into your buildings. But he's great, if you've never heard of him, Google him, because he's, he's got some really, really good videos up there as well. But his message, you know, is for how resilience, perseverance, and a growth mindset can drive success, not only in individual leaders, but your staff, your students, your parents, your community. So that, that was the, the number one takeaway for me. So overall, great retreat, great area down there as well, a lot of networking with area districts too, so it was phenomenal. Really enjoyed going to that one.
Before you do the second one, remind me tomorrow that, that name of the presenter, because you'll be in my notes. Oh, thank you. I can have Amy, Amy speak to Curriculum Council, or White Fisher, and see if either Bosse's can bring them there, and then we can send people, or if we get it under, him under a Bosse's co-serve, then we get aid back on it, and it's a little more valuable to be able to do it. So certainly look into it. You're a parent.
And the second conference report we'll be talking about is our trauma illness and grief process that we're putting here at Wilson. Every district from Niagara Falls to Helby are putting together a trauma, illness, and grief team within their school districts. And what's nice about that is, say, New Vane has a traumatic event, their counselors, their staff members, they're, you know, out of commission. So we, and they may call on us to come over and help not only their students, staff, and parents, but to bring together some guidance regarding mental health, how to help them through their, their, their trauma event. So, and it was five days, a full five days of training, and Amanda Townsend, Paul Galovitch, Michaela Ansey from the elementary, Morgan Taylor, myself, attended one. Also, Mr. Wilkie's already certified in trauma, illness, and grief, so you need, need to be certified in order to be a part of this team. So our team here includes our guidance staff as well. They went back in April, and I think they read, Mr. Carter might have read the report for their five days, but I'm not going to break down each individual day, just to be clear of what we talked about. Day one was introduction to trauma and form of care. Day two was understanding grief and loss of children. Day three was intervention strategies and mental health support and trauma illness. Day four was trauma and illness in the school setting. Day five was building a trauma-responsive community. So not just within the walls of the building, but, you know, reaching out to Niagara County as well. And Niagara County is really having this, their, their, their mental health division. Nick Hester, he's the leader for it, he's phenomenal, just, just working with him, you can just, you know, feel the passion he has in for this trauma, illness, and grief consortium. But he's just a great, great guy who leads us, and he's an easy guy to follow, and he's extremely educated and caring, passionate about everything he's doing. So today I actually attended a half-day conference about building the infrastructure within this building and just learning more on that. So it's not something that's going to happen right away, but we're moving in that direction. Any questions for me?
I'd just like to say that it's wonderful to see proactivity in that space, because, you know, these things unfortunately do happen, and having seen the impact that it have on building a community, it's very, very encouraging to know that people are really trying to get out in front of a lot of us and be prepared, you know, any event something like that happens. So well done.
My question is, all the people that went, are they now all certified?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you have to attend the conference in order to be certified, or do they have a certain degree?
No, you, I mean, I'm the director of guidance, I don't have any degrees in guidance or counseling, but I'm the point person, so to speak, and say, okay, we're going to send our experts here over there, you know, it's more about managing every category.
Okay, all right. But only one person from the elementary school?
No, you have Jason, you have Ansey, Morgan Taylor, those both.
Okay, I just, okay.
Yep, yeah, and we could send our counselors over there.
That's such a neat thing.
And the whole, the whole idea behind it is if an incident happens where, you know, right now, every superintendent when something happens, we all send a text and say, the union was now, well, now we, oh, they just send a text to the coordinator to help at the Niagara County Department of Health, and he's going to coordinate a response to make sure that, you know, three counselors from every building, or two counselors from every building are going to that school to help. You've probably seen N T U, they say, well, counselors are going to be available for kids. I'm going to be honest with you, they're never, they're never, it's just, it's just the ones that are in the building. So in this case, we would be able to lean on other districts. So every district in Niagara County is going through this training. So when an incident does happen, we can borrow counselors, or, and they'll have, they'll be using the same language. We can borrow an administrator, because if the incident happens at the middle school, Mr. Duncan, you busy dealing with the kids and, and the staff trying to, you know, get things back down, but there's still administration stuff that has, has to happen. So they may send an administrator if he wants an administrator to help run the building while he's there for the, the issue at hand. The model comes from, it's called trauma, illness, and grief, and the model came from another Bosse's that has this, this program. And I sat through a presentation at the superintendent's conference, and then Mr. Benton and I were talking, and it kind of went from there. So hopefully, I'm not looking forward to, I'm not looking forward to ever having to enact it, but I'm glad you went through the train.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Item thirteen, fundraiser request. Item eight thirteen A, approved fundraiser request per the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda items B through what? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item fourteen, use of facilities request. Approved the use of facilities request per the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda items B through K. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item fifteen A, field trip. Junior and senior high school field trip to Washington DC to view, to live inauguration ceremony of the forty-seventh president, and tour Washington DC from January eighteenth through twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, with cost for approximately six substitute teachers to cover for teaching chaperones. Be considered a proper charge against the district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vice President Stewart, you said there was no no spot?
No.
Parker Millie, do you have a report for today?
I have a little bit I can, I can talk about here.
Beautiful.
Excellent. So obviously, it's the first week of school, I mean, this week marks our first full week, so there's a ton to talk about. I do want to bring up the new bell schedule. At the moment, there are, it's a little rough. People are trying to adjust not having that extra minute to navigate the entire school building, people are still adjusting to that. A problem you wouldn't think that's occurring is since the periods, names have changed, people are going to the wrong classes. So for example, people will say, I'm going to my fifth period class, and maybe it's supposed to be period five B they're supposed to go to, as opposed to five A. But before, until, you know, things start to get set in stone, people start getting comfortable with this, I don't want to give an official statement on behalf of my constituents, and I'll, I'll conduct some research into that and see what they think. But other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Item nineteen, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Carter.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all your administrators, teachers, non-instructional staff, custodians, secretaries, cleaners, got the buildings ready for our students to return. Our first day of staff was last Tuesday, and our first day with students was last Wednesday. And, you know, knock on wood, everything seems to be, you know, moving somewhat smoothly. Obviously, there's some bumps in the road, but for the most part, it's running smoothly. I want to certainly say congratulations, Parker, on your election and also your appointment this evening as the student board member, Board of Educate, Board of Education members. In August, we sat down and did our goal-setting session using the S WAT survey results. I can report that the goals for twenty-four, twenty-five are set, and they'll be in news and notes this Friday for you to take a look at, and they'll go to the October board meeting. I also want all the admin to take a look at, so I'll email out to them just to see if we may have mis, miswritten, written something, but I want to make sure that they're absolutely accurate before we move forward. But the whole idea is to have them approved for the October meeting, and then we can move forward with building teams, beginning their actual plans. This is a message I just want to share with our board members and also anyone else that's listening. Mr. Wilkie will notify parents, but on the Friday, September twenty-seventh, there was a half-day in the elementary that's scheduled reunification drill. An important part of our advocacy plan is actually giving the students back to their parents, so that's what a reunification drill is. And in this particular case, a reunification drill was going to occur at our off-site location. So every school district, every school building has to have an off-site evacuation place. Ours is for a elementary school in the Village Fire Hall. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for the Fire Hall, because they're going through renovations, but unfortunately for us, the renovations aren't going to be done by the time the September twenty-seventh date is coming up, and I'm still working that with them recently, and they've asked us to reschedule. So in October, we'll have an official vote to change the calendar, because that half-day is in the calendar, and then we'll wait till later in May, well, probably till after January to actually pick the day, notify parents. But parents will be notified tomorrow or as soon as possible, but that is a full day of school for students, and then the drill will be sometime in May. Board members, you also received, not only electronically, but in your person, the NIS Book Proposed Resolutions. Our New York State School Board representative is Ms. Trustee Stewart, and she represents our board on the resolution committee, so she will devote one of her evenings coming up in October to meet with all the representatives across New York State to vote on these resolutions. October tenth, thank you. So therefore, at our workshop coming up next, in two weeks, we're going to go through these resolutions. It goes a lot smoother if you actually read them ahead of time. If not, our forty-five-minute board meeting turns into, our work session turns into an hour and a half. So if you get a chance, please take a look at it, you can even mark on it, you know, whether you agree or don't agree. If you don't understand something, that's one that you should probably, you know, ask a question about. If you don't understand, I'll do my best to, some of them are financial, so this is all very weak here, some of them I will know, and I will make sure if I don't know the answer to any of these that I know what they're about, I'll look them up beforehand. So you have a paper copy, you have it electronic, so whatever you're better reading with, you can buy, and if you can take a look at that in the next two weeks, we'd appreciate it. It'll make our night a much smoother. And I think that's everything I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Would like to thank all the administrators, staff, teachers, for successful first week back in school, great job, great job facilities, getting everything in order. Thanks, Todd, for your continued contract, we're looking forward to the continued relationship. You've done a great job, and well deserved, so thank you. Thanks, board members, for approving that, keeping Todd locked up here, so. And Parker, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you this year. So that was a time for public forum. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticism about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum and will not be allowed. Board may not respond to questions. They should be referred to the Superintendent of Schools at another time. Please be respectful and limit your comment to three minutes. Is there anybody wishing to come forward? Yes, sir.
Name's Jim Madden, five seventy-eight Lake Street, I've got three, I've got three kids at school. I know I came late and watched the soccer game zero-zero, by the way. I'm wondering, and I don't know if this is the proper forum, but I figure this is good and, has the school discussed killing off cell phones in school? Kids don't tell my children. The more, I think, I don't even need a little bit to talk about how much it hurts my children at home, being able to keep off of the S O's, and everyone else, has that been, have you guys tossed that around at all? I mean, I see tons of schools doing it, there's, there's no doubt to support having a, you know, maybe there's none. My just.
I'll do my best. I would say through eighth grade, you know, the- I would say through eighth grade, you know, the kids are not supposed to have them on them, they're supposed to be in their locker, locked up, left at home. I'm sure there's some students that are not following that, but when they do pull out, that's when they usually get in trouble. Our high school, it's individual teachers, so a teacher may be using them in the classroom, and they'll ask the kids to bring them out, so it's more teacher-directed at the high school level, but still, if they're out in the hallway or in the cafeteria, there's, you know, consequences for that. We haven't really discussed an all-out ban, but I know that that's going to be a topic continuing to come up. The governor is actually going on a listening tour right now around the school districts to hear what the practitioners say about cell phones. I'm guessing before the holiday season, we're going to get a blanket statement from the governor's office. She is on a kick to ban cell phones in schools. So I don't know what that's going to look like, or.
You know, one of the things I think about, I understand having phones in schools and that teachers allow, but my own personal experience, if I need to get something to the office, I shut my email off and my phone goes across my office, because it's the instantaneous response. And I want to respond to the people I serve immediately, but if I need to actually put in ninety minutes of futile thought, I have to shut my email off, because it's a stupid thing, it's constant, and I have to put my phone across the room. And I'm an adult, I didn't welcome this nonsense. So in the same vein, the children are sitting in class and feeling the buzz. It is a constant lack of focus. It just, you know what I mean? I don't care if they're off, my phone's never ringing, but when I feel it, it's constant. And that's, to me, that's why I just want them locked in the bag, or not, just completely, completely removed from it. So one of the things I try to do at home, I don't, the kitchen is where your phone is. If you, between certain hours, if you want to check your phone, go to the kitchen. That's uncool then, but you've got to go there. And if you're doing your work, the phone's got to be ten feet away, because it is the distraction, not even the usage, it's the distraction. And that's what drives me personally crazy, and I'm sure the kids feel the same way.
I don't disagree. I also think that there is just as many parents that think the opposite. So I think it's going to be a tough next couple.
What is the virtue of keeping a cell phone? What is the part of the board?
For me, I don't have a very. No, I, I don't know. Most of it has to do with being able to be in contact with your child. I would say that's probably the biggest thing in here, that they want to be able to be in contact with their child. That's what I've heard, not really, but. In the school districts that have been getting the pushback, that's what they've been getting, that the parents, certain parents want to have full and unvated contact with their child, right now. I think, and this is my honest opinion, and how I read the tweets, I think we're going to see some kind of a restriction on the use of cell phones. I just don't know what it's going to look like. And I think jumping the gun, I've learned in my thirty-four years of doing this, jumping the gun and taking it on and doing it first, you usually end up with a gun in your face. I like to take the slow methodical and kind of read the tweets a little bit, and when somebody makes, when somebody makes the move, I can learn from their mistakes. I don't have to create my own mistakes.
Do you have a general feeling with the staff? Is that discussed in somebody like Dr. Davis?
I would say, you know, like I said, through the eighth-grade staff, I don't think it's a major issue. High school, again, depends on the generation of the staff member. Younger staff members are a little more used to using them than people of my generation, so, you know, it's probably split. Half the staff is okay with the way they use them, the other half of the staff is, no, we're not going to use them in a classroom. And I don't see them out, I mean, I've been to a lot of places. I haven't seen them out here specifically as much as I've been in other school districts that I've been in. So actually, I don't think it's as big of a problem. We still see them, and we still have kids getting consequences. I mean, we don't have the kids walking around the hall, that doesn't matter. And that does happen in other places then, you know, they don't have their earbuds in and walking around with phones, but they're supposed to be off and in their locker. I don't know how accurate, but it's often in their locker. The only one.
Again, my real thing is the distraction. It's not even the usage, it is simply the distraction. And it's a lack of focus that is indebted with, I mean, I don't know how tired you guys have gotten to learn a person, but it's a treat.
I appreciate it, I really do. Like I said, I think there's going to be some kind of action for, you know, as soon as this listening tour. I just keep seeing the newspaper, the governor and the state act sending out messages that there's going to be some kind of a, you know, some kind of a direction coming out from state act. They're usually a little late on giving those things, but I don't know if it's going to be an immediate thing or what she's hearing.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Sure.
And thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Board members, any comments or questions? I'd like to make a call.
I was just wondering, and I had a hard time hearing you, but did you say your children are complaining to you or your?
Oh, no, my children will kill me.
I didn't, I didn't know. I'm retired preschool teacher, we didn't have cell phones.
I look forward to when they do something wrong, because when I take their business away, they are better human beings. And it's so clear, it's they even, it's just obvious. There is no argument against any of this.
It was my turn.
They're not better students.
It was my turn. Are you small enough?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's a good technique to take the phone away. I used to actually shut the phone off and make them still carry the phone, but it wasn't Thanks a lot.
There's no need for a second session tonight, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sumo.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Very carefully.